Welcome to the City Council's May 5th City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with all City Council, City staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I'd first like to introduce staff and the City Council members present. City Council Member Kat Carlton, City Council Member Betsy Nash, City Council Member Ray Mueller, staff present, our City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. Welcome to all of our participants, our interviewees, as well as members of the public who are joining us tonight. The City Council will be performing Planning Commission interviews. Again, this is interviews only. No appointments will be made until the May 12, 2020, City Council meeting. Our first applicant will be Andrew Barnes. For each applicant, I will be allowing them to engage their webcam and their microphone. The City Council will then proceed with asking their questions. The applicant will have the chance to respond at the end of each individual interview. The applicant will be asked to turn off their webcam, their microphone. They will be dismissed from the meeting. If they wish to rejoin the meeting, they can do so by logging back in, but they will be dismissed from the meeting entirely. But again, with the option to return. So at this time, I am going to ask our first applicant, Andrew Barnes, if you can engage your webcam and your microphone. Mr. Barnes, are you able to hear us?
Hi there.
Perfect, thank you. And I will allow the City Council to proceed with the interview.
Good evening, Mr. Barnes, and welcome to your interview. It's nice to see you.
Thank you, thank you. I am gonna organize myself here. There were two different webcam invite, excuse me, webinar invites. So let me get this queued up here. Yes, thank you, good evening. Good to see you all again.
Nice to see you too. Your first question is, tell us about your views of the Planning Commission's relationship with the City Council and the Commission's relationship with City staff.
So I feel that the primary relationship that Planning Commission has is with the zoning code and with the ordinances. I think understanding what is in them, understanding how they are written, understanding the intent of them and what's on the books is the most important. And I think City staff is critical to doing the interpretive work of what do we have? What are we looking at? What does the current, what's the current guidance? If it's a zoning ordinance, you know, what are the development standards? If it's something that's more policy-related, how they're written, what's the precedent? And the staff is absolutely critical to good decision-making because they provide so much of the work product that is necessary. And when you get a staff report, it's incumbent upon anyone who is looking to make a reasoned decision to really dig into the staff report, understand what's in there, look for any external sources of information to cross-reference. But staff is the number one resource. And I have a great deal of respect for staff and have a great deal of respect for the Menlo Park staff and their diligence. City Council, I'll speak from my perspective. I don't know that I have a specific relationship as a current council member with City Council in relationship to my work on Planning Commission. I think for Planning Commission to work, it needs to be as dedicatedly non-political as possible. I don't think Planning Commission is necessarily a venue for advocacy per se. And I don't think it's, there's a reason why it's not an elected position. And I think that's a good thing. And I think there is a level of isolation from preferences that I think the Planning Commission needs to have to be able to sort through and decide on an issue based on the evidence and based on what's in front of them as opposed to preference. Because, you know, so I'll leave it there. So I think their relationships are singular. I think it's important for a Planning Commissioner to be able to see information as it stands and take calls or be receptive if a City Council member wants to flesh something out or talk through something. But other than that, I think the Planning Commission and a Planning Commissioner looks towards the information and makes, does his work based on that.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I have another question for you. Just thinking about your time on the Planning Commission, has there been a time where you have voted away that now you see that may have been a mistake or you wish you had done something differently?
So I can tell you early on in the process, when I first became a Planning Commissioner, one of the things that I learned along the way was I changed my policy about meeting with applicants. I remember first coming onto Planning Commission and wanting to get different perspectives on a particular issue. And what I learned, however, was meeting with applicants, and particularly on the bigger commercial projects, but even on the smaller ones as well, be residential. The best information that's heard on the dais is information for me that's heard for the first time. And what I learned was pre-vetting information or asking questions before and then being up on the dais and hearing the information or hearing a presentation and already understanding what is being said or already having asked that question precludes me from asking that question in a public forum for the first time so people can hear it for the first time. And it's a fresh question, a fresh information. I learned that information is best heard one time by me at the beginning in the same form that everyone else hears it because I tend to dig into issues with curious, with curiosity out of the gate as opposed to having background information that the people who are in the audience don't necessarily have the benefit of having. So that's a practice that I implemented. I do not meet as a general rule almost exclusively with an applicant prior to. Every time they reach out, I say, hey, look, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to talk in a public forum, in a public setting. It has nothing to do with a preference or dislike for your project. It just has to do with it's a public forum and everyone should hear the information at the same time and have the advantage of hearing the same questions asked. So specific to a vote, I don't think so. But what I did, what I do think back on sometimes is, you know, public pressure. It's tough. It's tough being a Planning Commissioner when you're sitting up on the dais and your neighbors are out in the audience, right? Your neighbors are there and they've got preferences and guys you play soccer with or parents. So becoming somewhat inert to the desire to please versus the desire to be like, hey, look, this may not be your preference and this may not be, as a matter of fact, something that I necessarily agree with, but this is what, this is what's fair in this particular instance. So developing the ability to stand in front of one's neighbors but yet call something as, you know, as unpopular as it may be, as I see it, is, you know, something I've had to learn along the way, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Are there any follow-up questions from anyone on council? Well, I have another question, Mr. Barnes. And I appreciate your honesty in the last question. And just thinking about the amount of time that is put into the Planning Commission, I very rarely am able to watch the entire meetings because of the length. But I do look at your agendas. And just thinking about the amount of time, how much time do you commit to the Planning Commission? And you can either speak per meeting or on a weekly basis? Just to give us an idea.
So as Chair, I always, it's two-part. One is, you know, there's a couple hours, there's maybe an hour or two a week which is just running through the agenda, not from a content perspective or from a flow perspective, what's coming up? What do I need to know? Do I need to check in with staff? Are there any questions about that? The work product itself can vary, you know, widely. It's, the commercial stuff down in the Bayfront is hard. It's hard stuff in the transportation mix and the policy stuff. So it can go from, you know, ten, maybe six to, on the outside, eight hours per meeting as a prep. It gets easier as you go along. I also, I mean, I love the, I'm kind of, it works for me because I love the content, right? And I love digging in and I love figuring out land use. And, you know, the hard part, and I think what is so important about Menlo Park's Planning Commission is that we roll the ARB, the Architecture Review Board functions, into the planning functions. I thought that was normal. And then when I went as a newbie Planning Commissioner to the League of California Cities, better than half have an architectural review function, which is separate and distinct, like Palo Alto does, from your planning function. And probably because we roll it together here in Menlo Park, a critical skill set is being able to read plans. You have to know how to look at plans and be able to render decisions on them because you're asked about variances. You're, I mean, one of them is the aesthetic piece, right? Do you like this? Is the gable in the right place? Is it over this? But oftentimes, you're digging into the plans themselves in having to opine on whether something is permissible or not, in particular on the commercial. I mean, it's residential and commercial. But if you can't run through a set of plans, understand what's in there, understand a site plan, understand a landscape plan, understand, you know, we do a lot based on the development in the Bayfront with PSLs, with open space, with common areas, with configurations on the site, the site planning. If you can't look through a stack of plans and understand what's in there, it's unhelpful because you're being asked to talk to them. And, you know, I feel good about having worked with staff over time to say, hey, look, you know, we gotta cut down on the narrative in the staff reports. Like, give me bullet points and matrices and data sets so that we can work through the stuff as opposed to long narratives. And I think we've done some good work with that and allows you to toggle between plans and what you're being asked to look at. So it takes a while and it just depends on skill set. So that's my number. I work for the County Santa Clara. I mean, I do this day in and day out. I'm in the Office of Supportive Housing down there. We, I'm the Senior Housing Development Officer and we're doing developments day in and day out. My job is on the entitlement path, is on the building of permanent support of extremely low-income, very-low-income IDD, which is intellectually development disabled projects. So the projects are anywhere between, you know, 100 to 200 units, $80 to $140 million. And it's, and we're the lead agency for their affordable housing bond. So every day, I'm seeing plans, I'm seeing entitlements, I'm seeing, you know, other counties, other municipalities and how they work. And Planning Commissions play a role in all of this. I mean, anywhere you've got discretionary approvals, it's important. So that's a long way, I think, of answering, I hope. Did I answer that?
Yes, you did. Thank you. And at this point, does anybody have any follow-up questions? All right, well, thank you so much, Mr. Barnes. We appreciate your service in Menlo Park.
Yep, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And at this time, there is a key piece that I did not do, and that was to read this piece. The City Council will be interviewing applicants for the Planning Commission. No action will be taken at this meeting and appointments are scheduled for the May 12 City Council meeting. At this time, Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I did not receive any public comment via the web form. But for any member of the public who wishes to provide public comment on this agenda this evening, which is interviews for the Planning Commission, please engage that hand feature and we can call on you and give you the appropriate time to provide that public comment. I'm seeing no hands. We can continue with the interviews. The next interviewee we have is Theo Keat. And I do see, let me engage that microphone and webcam. Theo, are you able to hear us and engage your webcam?
Yeah, I can hear you perfectly.
Wonderful, thank you. And are you able to engage your webcam?
Do I have to do something?
Yes, you should have a picture of a little camera that will allow us to see you if you have a device that has a webcam capability.
Yes, and what do I do?
You should just be able to click that.
Click on that, oh. Can you see me now? No. But you can hear me, right?
We can hear you. We can proceed with a microphone only.
I don't know why is that? I see my own picture and that's important, but...
Has he, have you clicked on the camera on the side?
The camera? You see, my picture is partially hidden. Ah, there you go. Share my, okay, there it is.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
It was hidden behind something else.
It does that, okay.
Thank you. Yes, all right. Well, welcome to the Planning Commission interviews, Mr. Keat. The first question from the council is, describe your understanding of the responsibilities of the Planning Commission and how your personal, community, or professional experience relate to these responsibilities.
Okay, I was fortunate to listen a little bit to Andrew just before me and he told me a lot more about the Planning Commission than I could imagine. The last time that I had been at the Planning Commission meeting was probably about 20 years ago and when we had a case over here as a new neighbor in building. But for the rest, I have very little understanding of what the Planning Commission does. I believe obviously that all the sort of detailed work is done by the staff and the Planning Commission then basically has to review it and decide what sort of decisions they take. I would assume that the key thing is that the staff basically works on what is required, what needs to be done, and they will make sure that everything in compliance with the regulations. So definitely, I can imagine that probably having engineers on the Planning Commission is probably more relevant than having a CPA. But at the same time, I have been a resident of Menlo Park for the last 27 years. And therefore, I think there should be somewhere for a rebooting to the city. I like this case very much. I believe very much in the fact that we obviously have to grow as a commercial site. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we protect the residential areas and that we keep the quality of life as best as we can. And you asked me two questions, Cecilia. Did I answer you to the second question?
Yeah, describe your understanding of the responsibilities and how your personal, community, or professional life relates.
I spent most of my life as a finance executive where you very often have to make judgments on items that are not really directly the numbers that you deal with, but you have to make decisions on items, engineering, in sales and manufacturing. And so you get a very broad view on everything. And I think it's important when you deal with planning that you consider all the different aspects that is important for planning. The short-term ones, the residential area that I just mentioned before, the commercial interest that is important, and the overall importance of the city and what it represents. So I think I may not have the expertise that you would find in most people that are working in the planning area, but it is important to get some fresh ideas there too.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions from the council on this question? No? Okay. Well, the next question for you, Mr. Keat. What is your familiarity with the El Camino Real downtown-specific plan?
I have to say, nothing special. I know there's a plan, but yeah, I have not read it or looked at it. I'm sure there will be enough time to dig into that if it comes to that.
Okay, thank you. And I know you just explained or shared with us some of your background. But I would like to ask you something specific. If you have any background in architecture?
No.
Or drawing or civil engineering?
No, no. I'm a CPA and I spend my whole life on the finance side.
Okay. Thank you. And then just so, Councilmember Nash, you had a follow-up question?
Hi, thank you. I was wondering if you've done any, if you have any familiarity with reading the plans? Like, if you've, for example, I've done a remodel on my house, so I'm fairly familiar with reading the plans. Have you ever, do you have any experience with that?
Yeah, I mean, when I first came to Menlo Park in '93, we did a very extensive remodeling of the house. So we had to work in the plan. And then actually, about five years ago, we did another extensive remodeling of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So yes, we had to work with the architect. We had to go through the plans and we obviously had to go to the city for approval. And so that's basically my experience, direct in my personal life of dealing with these sort of plans.
Thank you.
Was there anything in that process? Did you have to come before the Planning Commission?
No, we didn't have to, neither case. Actually, that's, I take that back. Yeah, the first one in '93, we basically had to go in front of the Planning Commission. The second one, just the contractor went over there and there was no need for a special review.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Okay, well, Mr. Keat, we thank you so much for coming and interviewing, especially in this new form of normal for us. It was great speaking with you and thank you applying for being, thank you for your application for Planning Commission.
You're welcome. Okay. Talk to you later.
Okay. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you again, Mr. Keat. I'm going to, oh, you've already disengaged from the meeting, perfect. And Mayor Taylor, we are running ahead of schedule, so I'm still waiting for our other applicants to join us. I've just begun giving them some quick phone calls. So if you wouldn't mind maybe taking a brief five-minute recess while I continue to make some phone calls.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Heron. I will see you all in about five minutes.
Thank you all for bearing with me. I do have our next applicant, which will be Henry Riggs. For those of us just joining, I will be asking our applicants to engage their webcam and their microphones, and at the end of their interview, they will be asked to disengage their mics and webcams and be removed from the meeting. They can, of course, rejoin if they'd like. So at this time, Mr. Riggs, if you're able to hear us, if you could, please engage your microphone and your webcam, and the city council will proceed with their interviews. Thank you so much, sir, and I appreciate you coming in early.
My pleasure.
Good evening, Mr. Riggs, and welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Our first question is, tell us about some situation in which you were part of some diverse group of colleagues working on a project over an extended period of time. What were your particular strengths and weaknesses operating in that context?
If I may go back a few years, I might point to the downtown specific plan where we had, and we, I think, have always had a diverse planning commission, and I became rather heavily involved, including doing some additional research and several meetings with staff. I guess in terms of strengths, it did help to be an architect, although I wouldn't want to overrate that. I think what perhaps mattered more is that I had been through the process of planning applications, and I had been through the, what I call the first six months of getting your feet wet with the planning commission. It really is a learning curve, even for someone who has been through a fair amount of planning from the architect or owner's end. It was quite enjoyable. In fact, I ended up being quite supportive of a couple of people that typically voted differently than I did on residential and on development issues.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Are there, was there any follow-up questions or comments from Mr. Riggs on that first question? Okay. Move on to the next one. Please tell us about your views of the planning commission's relationship with the city council and the commission's relationship with city staff.
If you mean what is appropriate in the relationship, the commission is there to, as I see it, take some of the burden off of city council to work through issues when it comes to both minor items, if I may call it that, with, say, use permits, and then with planning tasks, anything from developments coming through study sessions and moving forward to establishing changes in code, like the secondary unit law, transportation issues. And then in terms of our relationship with staff, it is always good to remember that the staff work 40 hours a week and have degrees in this work, and that the commission is there to represent the population and say, my neighbors would like to see this work, or I or my neighbors would like to know why this is a preference from planning staff, or in some cases, from council, and how does it fit with this concern or this desire?
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. I have a question that's actually not listed, but I have to ask. Considering your level of knowledge and the length of time that you've been on the planning commission, how do you see SB 330 impacting the city?
And forgive me, because I don't keep up with my numbers, is 330 the latest passed regarding density?
Councilmember Nash, I know that you've been active in this area more. I think it doesn't have more to do with, it has to be a two-thirds a residential project?
That's exactly right. If a project's two-thirds residential, then it's streamlined through the process.
Frankly, I think it's very helpful for housing projects, because the idea of a pure housing project getting a buy, but then you can't have a coffee shop or a gym on the lower level, or frankly, you can't use the lower level for commercial or even office, and therefore make the housing project more economically viable. That was a tough restriction. That was, that hampered, I think, the 55 and over projects. And while I, you know, of course, as a Menlo Park representative, don't particularly like state mandates, I see this in a way as more of a relief of a restriction than an additional mandate.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from staff? I'm sorry, are there any other questions from council? Councilmember Nash?
I guess along the lines of SB 330, I'm just curious if, if you have any thoughts about how we should approach the limited number of meetings that will be allowed under SB 330 for these streamlined projects, and just any ideas around that?
Again, I felt I understood the purpose there. It does put an organizational burden on us, predominantly meaning staff, but as I recall, it's three meetings. Is that correct?
I'm actually not sure. I know it greatly limits them.
I can't help but feel that we could do it if we prepared and used those meetings appropriately. I had to, I think the last two projects that I did for a private school in Portola Valley, in order to meet our budget, we allowed the architects to limit the number of meetings that they would have during the design phase. And my thought was, well, the school doesn't operate like that. But I was able to organize them and guide them to the point where we, before each meeting, pushed our criteria forward, so that the first meeting was not just an introductory meeting, for example. It was already making progress. I may be optimistic, but I think we can work with it. And then, of course, I realize that we don't have any choice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Are there any other questions from council? All right, Councilmember Carlton?
Hi, Henry. I went to unmute myself and then just saw I was not muted, so. I'm curious, because I remember you giving me a hard time about that. Why can't, why can't city council just get all these things approved as quickly as the school in question? And the reason, as I'm sure you know, is because people get offended if things don't go before their commission, and people get offended if they're not consulted in the neighborhood, and, oh, I desperately wish we could be as streamlined and have as few decision-makers and input people as a school. That would save us all a lot of, not only time, but probably a lot of money as well. But I'm curious, if someone died tomorrow and gave you a magic wand to be able to change things for the planning commission or how we do things in Menlo Park, what would you change?
Oh. I think I'd leave that magic wand in the holster and talk with staff about some ideas, because it's so easy to be active, interested, and opinionated, and have an idea that would change something. About three out of four times, you walk it forward, and, oh, that's a one-way street. You can't go up that street. You'll have to reroute, so. I think Menlo Park actually does a very good job in a lot of ways, and we are restricted by building code and by state codes, by CEQA. I do, I'll go out on a limb a little bit. I do think that since, as you described, various groups feel, well, why wasn't I consulted? I remember the largest issues in particular, like a specific plan or large developments, people would come in a year after the project had been first announced by the city and messages sent out and news, and say, well, I never heard about this. Well, there were two mailings to your address. Well, I didn't get them. I think to some degree, we do press a little forward, and that's my reminder to be ready for this meeting, sorry. We do bend a little bit, maybe too much, in order to accommodate people who weren't paying attention, and if we could maybe make more of an issue of it upfront. I have an idea about that, but I am not going to share it, so that affected neighbors or affected businesses really get the word and start talking. I think this would be more effective than having additional meetings further on. I also, I don't remember which council member I've expressed this to, but I feel sometimes that maybe not so much to point a finger at planning staff, but at our consultants, like to make use of the residents to avoid getting to know the town and making conclusions that would be best for our town. I mean, for example, if you're really going to need, and I'm just making this up on the fly, if you're really going to need a larger sewer system in the Laurel Line neighborhood, and you just start digging up the street, people take a very dim view of it, but it needs to be done. And you don't really want to ask all 89 homes, should we dig up the street? You want to have gone far enough with your own deliberations in terms of planning, council, goals and needs, and say, look, Laurel Line neighborhood, this needs to be done, and this is why. If you have an alternative idea to solve this issue, please bring it forward next Tuesday. In the meantime, this is what we plan to do starting in July. So that, again, it may sound, it may be more simplistic, and it's something I would certainly want to run through staff. But I feel that as we have done more outreach, and particularly meetings run by consultants, and I take part in these meetings, and the great majority of the meeting is not knowledgeable people assessing a problem and solving it. It's PR. So some of it has to be done, but I think the consultants like to lean on it, and they have a program, and they have a number of meetings, and they can bill half a million dollars for it, and I don't think that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Are there any other questions? All right. Well, thank you so much for spending time with us during this interview, and we really appreciate your service to the city of Menlo Park.
My pleasure. Thank you for entertaining my possible continuing participation.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you, too.
Thank you again, Mr. Riggs. I'm going to be disconnecting you from the meeting, but feel free to rejoin in the same process as you did originally. At this time, our next applicant is going to be Mr. John Pimentel. Mr. Pimentel, you're able to hear me. Can you please engage your microphone and your webcam?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can definitely hear you.
Yes.
Oh, I see. No one can see me yet.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Pimentel, and welcome to the planning commission interviews. Our first question for you is, what experience do you have working in a group setting? And indicate what sort of framework was used to ensure efficient and effective meetings?
Well, I've been in a number of group settings throughout my career, both in the public and private sector. The one I draw to is developing a massive solar project in San Benito County, in which we had lots of meetings with various community groups and interested parties in the process. I think in order to run those meetings efficiently, you have to start with a very clear agenda and a set of rules so that all participants agree to those rules prior to the meeting starting. And as you guys have probably found out with some of your late nights at city council, whereas you want to give everyone the chance to have their input, you do have to have some framework or allocation of time. some framework or allocation of time that can be filled where folks have participated, but you try and avoid reputation, repetition, and ongoing and endless discussion on essentially similar points. If you can do that with an effective gavel, then you can have an effective meeting.
Thank you. And are you familiar with Robert's Rules of Order?
Yes.
Okay. And the next question is, describe why...
I'm joking or smiling because I just gave a copy of Robert's Rules of Order to my daughter, who is trying to figure out how to run a high school club and has the exact same problem of inefficient meetings.
Oh, wow. Well, thank you for sharing that with us. Describe why you want to serve on the Planning Commission and what you hope to accomplish as a member.
I'm interested in the Planning Commission. Really, I'm interested in serving the community, whether that's through the Planning Commission or some other organization, is to be determined. Frankly, I'm not sure that my qualifications are what the Planning Commission actually needs, and I would leave it to the council's discretion as to whether you want to have more people with architectural and planning backgrounds rather than mine, which is more of a business background, laced also with some significant transportation, planning, and policy experience in my previous public life. That said, in my desire to serve the community, I have applied for the Planning Commission because I think our town is in a very interesting juncture. There has been a debate that's gone on for years in Menlo Park between growth and no growth, housing and no housing. And it's an interesting time where I think our leaders, you in particular, are given a very difficult task to figure out what's the right pace of growth, locations for growth, and type of growth that we want to have in Menlo Park. If given the opportunity, I'd like to influence that process and bring about more housing and better transportation and a more vibrant downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Pimentel. Are there any other questions from the council? Councilmember Carlton.
There's always a delay because I'm taking notes, typing when people speak. So if it looks like I'm looking down, doing something else, it's because I'm rapidly trying to type and take notes, because when you interview various people, it mushes in my head. And so I take detailed notes to make sure I remember exactly who stood for what and that kind of thing. So one of the difficult things I'm sure you're aware of with the NIMBY YIMBY, growth, no growth, and some, I don't know if you were listening to, some of the other people we've interviewed have talked about the difficulty of having one of your good friends in the audience and having to make difficult decisions that you know are going to upset people. How do you, where do you land on the NIMBY YIMBY scale? And how are you going to handle that when you get so much pressure, you know, from people that you've known when your daughter played soccer, from people down the street? It's difficult. It's, you have to make difficult decisions sometimes. And I was wondering, have you considered that and the pressure? And how would you handle that? I guess I've got, there are two questions. How do you handle the pressure and where are you on the kind of NIMBY YIMBY position?
Well, I'll answer the pressure comment first. I think in any role, that's a functionary one like Planning Commission, that's not a policy-level set of decisions like the ones you face on the council, you, a Planning Commissioner should be governed by the rules. So if the, if the, if the specific plan or the code says X, that's really what the Planning Commission should be looking to execute. To the extent there are judgment calls to be made in that regard, the Planning Commission certainly has a responsibility to exercise good judgment in those situations. But I don't think it's the Planning Commission's responsibility to shape policy outside of what the council wants to do. I think it would be an untenable situation to have a pro-growth Planning Commission and an anti-growth City Council, or vice versa. So to answer your question directly on NIMBY versus YIMBY, I believe that we should allow market forces to decide a greater level of how our community grows. That is to say, there's a role for planning, but at the end of the day, sometimes there can be too much planning. And in fact, I think that our town needs to do more in terms of developing new housing stock, especially affordable housing stock. And I think we should be more aggressive at developing the downtown by putting in a parking lot or two, maybe changing the character of Santa Cruz Avenue to be more of a pedestrian-friendly walkway by putting, or bikeway by putting parking structures in identity development downtown that could accommodate a combination of high quality of life and economic growth. So if you were asking whether I'm a NIMBY or a YIMBY, I'd fall strongly in the category of YIMBY.
Okay, thanks. Sorry, I'm still typing.
Oh, in regards to, you know, a neighbor or a friend needing to twist an arm for their variance or whatever it might be, I don't think that really would bother me if I make a bad decision and get rejected from the Planning Commission. That would be the end of the process for me. And I would try and do what is the right thing by the code. By the policies of the city.
Great. Thank you so much. We appreciate your coming and applying and your answers. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pimentel? I don't see any additional questions. I have one last question for you, and that is, what is your understanding of the time commitment that is necessary in order to be well-prepared for the Planning Commission meetings?
That's a great question. In fact, I asked that of both Judy and Henry recently. I would think that it's a good eight to 12 hours a week of work. And one of the things I wanted to make sure that I shared with the council is that, as you're considering people for this position, as I said before, I certainly would yield any consideration to the people most qualified for the position. And in full disclosure, I recently entered a race to be on the, to run for the San Mateo County Community College Trustees Board. So if that, it would create, it may not create a legal or policy conflict of interest, but it wouldn't create a time conflict of interest for me. And so I don't know that I will win that race. And so I appreciate still being considered for this position, but I do want to say, if it's a toss-up or a close choice between me and another candidate, know that I will be spending a fair bit of my time focused on the Community College District and trying to make it as good a Community College District as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Pimentel, for sharing that information. It looks like Councilmember Carlton has a follow-up question.
Then I have the obvious follow-up question. If we put you on the Planning Commission and you win the election, are you still going to want to be on the Planning Commission?
Probably not. I think I would focus on, I would focus on the Community College District and, you know, I would resign the Planning Commission in order to do that. I don't think it would be, I don't think I would have the time or the bandwidth to do both well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your honesty. I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you running for office. It takes, takes a community, people to volunteer and offer their time to move the needle. And this is a volunteer role, elected role, so at least the one, I'm not sure actually if the one that you're applying for is elected, and it's not, it's not a paid position, but regardless, the time commitment is huge. So I appreciate your honesty with sharing with us that you did, that you are entering a race, and what your intentions would be if you went. So I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you. And I wanted to be transparent. I had started this process with the application some months ago, and really only crystallized my thoughts on the Community College District more recently. So I hope I'm not wasting your time with the conversation, but thank you for interviewing me nonetheless.
Oh, I appreciate it. Councilmember Nash has a follow-up question.
I guess, thank you so much for, yes, your interest in coming in today. I'm wondering, you had also expressed some interest in some other commissions. Do you have any thoughts about whether you would be interested in serving in any of those, as a commissioner, on any of those commissions which do involve fewer meetings? And do you have any preference, which, do you have any thoughts about which one you might be interested in?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, Councilmember Nash. Yes, I have a pretty deep background in transportation, and I would love to try and help the city improve its, its, its planning and execution through the Complete Streets Commission. Likewise, I have a high interest in housing and would love to help on the Housing Commission. Both of those seem like less intense and less hour commitment than the Planning Commission. And so those, if those positions become open and y'all would consider me, that might be something that would be a good fit with a potential role on the Community College Board of Trustees, if that works out. So thank you for offering that.
Thank you.
Raising it.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pimentel? All right. Thank you so much for applying to the Planning Commission, and we appreciate the time we just spent getting to know what your intentions are. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your continued leadership in managing the city through this crazy time we're in. So good luck, and really best wishes in getting through it all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you again, Mr. Pimentel. I am going to dismiss you from the meeting. If you'd like to rejoin, you could follow the same process as you did to join the meeting. And at this time, our final applicant is Jeff Schmidt. I do see him here. Mr. Schmidt, if you're able to hear us okay, would you mind engaging your microphone and your webcam?
Okay, does that, how's that? Judy, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we're able to hear you perfectly.
Let me try the camera.
Perfect. Thank you so much, sir. Yes.
Sure. I feel like I'm the last speaker after lunch on day two of a conference, so if I'm the last one, I have to bring a little energy.
Well, we appreciate that, and welcome to Planning Commission interviews, Mr. Schmidt. And I'll start off with the first question. What is your understanding of the time commitment that is necessary in order to be well-prepared for the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I am, yeah, just before everything happened and with what we're going through right now, I attended the last Planning Commission. I sort of sat through to the bitter end. So I got a pretty good sense that the meetings themselves are fairly long and involved, which was really great. There was a lot of debate about some specific issues. There was a lot of back and forth. A lot of people got to voice their opinions, which was fantastic. It was a pretty good turnout. And, you know, you could tell that the council, that the commission was well-prepared, too. So I think anywhere between 10 and 12 hours a month feels about right for something like that. And then just the commitment of the meetings and being involved and being involved in extra things for the city. So that's sort of my rough understanding.
All right. Thank you. My next question is, what is the general plan and what is its relationship to the zoning ordinances?
Yeah, the general plan, I mean, I look at those based on my involvement with some different groups. Just the plan for the city, what's the development going to look like? What's the way we want to use land? How do we balance that with, between environmental needs, commercial needs, all those kind of things? And then the relationship is really just, the way I sort of look at it is, you end up juggling a lot of different perspectives relative to the general plan. So it's sort of, that's your framework and your guide. And then as far as the different codes and the different rules that you have to follow is just making sure that you understand those and can get really specific to make sure you're following both the general plan and those codes.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions from the council on this question? No? Okay, we'll move on to the next question. Do you have any personal experience with the Planning Commission discretionary review process or building permit process?
Not with the commission, no. The commission's new to me. Most of my experience in this area was through a couple of years serving on Silicon Valley Leadership Group's Housing Commission. And so we would review a number of projects that would, a number of projects that would come through that meeting presented by developers and interested parties. So my experience is more on the development side and more on reviewing those kind of projects versus anything specific for this Planning Commission.
Okay, I have one more question, and that is, tell us about a situation in which you were part of some diverse group of colleagues working on a project over some extended period of time. What were your particular strengths and what were your particular weaknesses operating in that context?
Yeah, I guess my background is, I've recently moved into the nonprofit world, but most of my background is corporate. And a lot of the corporate environment is a very diverse mix, depending on which companies you're involved with. I've been lucky to be part of lots of diverse companies. So a specific example is, we, I was with eBay for a period of time, and one of my roles there was to pull together large events for a diverse customer base, and really lots of diverse perspectives from around the world and from around the corporation. My role tends to be the organizer. I think the interesting thing about a lot of these roles is you have tons of people who are very creative and tons of people with ideas and tons of business leaders who want to see the financials work and all this sort of different dynamics. I tended to be the train conductor, if that makes sense, making sure that there was a plan, making sure that things like that stayed on track. Mr. Whiteboard, who kind of checked everything off and made sure that we really got across the finish line with a lot of activities like that. So in those big diverse groups, that's where I tend to play, although I can wear lots of different hats. I find that that's a pretty valuable skill set for making sure things get across the finish line. So just one example.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And just open the floor again for the last time to ask the council if there are any follow-up questions that you have for Mr. Schmidt. Councilmember Nash?
Yeah, hello. I was wondering, what is your familiarity with the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan? And sort of any thoughts around that and around, well, around the Downtown Specific Plan?
I've seen some of the news items. I'm not as familiar. I mean, to be honest, I'm sort of five months into the community, so I'm actually learning the community. I moved from the Campbell area. So I've... So I, I think my familiarity is probably just what I've read in the paper and some of the, some of the ways they're considering developing it, but not as familiar. I think I've got a lot of background reading to do for some of the specific plans that are underway, to be transparent.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton? You're on mute, Councilmember Carlton.
Last time I was talking, it was off mute before I knew I was, so apologize. If I'm looking down, it's because I'm frantically typing and taking notes as you speak, so I can remember what each person said. So you're new to the community and you want to get involved, and it seems like you have experience in housing, you've got experience in these different areas. What was it that made you decide you wanted to get into the Planning Commission? Because to be honest with you, it's probably the most brutal, second only to city council of the things that you could possibly want to do in this town, because every decision you make, nearly, is going to annoy one neighbor or the other. What possessed you to want to do this and over, over some of the others that you might have considered as well?
It's, that's a, that's a really interesting question. I think, I sort of really looked, when, when we moved into the area, I knew I wanted to get involved, and I looked at the different, the different groups. And, you know, I think going to the, going to the meeting and watching how the group interacted with the public and realizing that there were two sides to every issue and that the decisions were very directly affecting people in a really specific way. I guess I, the way to say it is, I've been involved in lots of projects where it's nebulous and it sort of has an impact, but you're never quite sure. And, you know, maybe we did a good thing, and the leadership group was a little bit like that. I mean, not to, you know, we would vote to support a project or not a project, but it wasn't as direct as saying, you know, yes, you have this permit, you can do something with your house in your residential area or with your business. So I think part of what got me hooked and actually got me to put my application in was going and seeing it in action. And there was a project where I think there were 10 members of the community that came in and voiced opposition to a permit. And not to get into the specifics, but it was fascinating, and it gave me energy to kind of sit there and realize the direct impact it had. So brutal's, brutal's good. I'm used to kind of brutal and tough, and it's enjoyable, I think, too. I don't know what that says about me, by the way, but now that-
Preaching to the choir.
Well, either way, we appreciate you applying for the Planning Commission. And are there any other questions? Thank you. We appreciate your time. And, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for holding these and doing this even when everybody's locked away. So good luck and thanks, and I appreciate you considering me.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome. Have a good evening.
All right, you too. Bye-bye.
And that was our final applicant of the evening. We have five applications for the Planning Commission. We were able to interview all five this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and this meeting is adjourned.
Bye-bye, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Have a great night, guys. Bye.